Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
All in favor then? Any discussion?
Yes, I'm, that last meeting was horrendous. It was an embarrassment. It was particularly hard on me. I felt a lot of disrespect and there was tremendous amount. And I am not one to, I know I interrupt. And I don't always raise my hand. I think I, you need to make sure the meeting is run properly. And that people are not talking over each other and having side conversations. This is public, you know? I mean, it was people, I know people who watched it who were like, what is going on? Who's running that meeting? You know, so, um, I know you're not that type of, you know, person who wants to get in there and.
That's a selectments meeting?
No, the, the, the last planning commission.
It was next to the last one. The last one, last one was more under control.
Yeah, you're correct. Sorry about that. Yeah, so I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm on board with you correcting me and saying you did not raise your hand or you did not ask, you know?
No problem.
And I think everybody else here is as well. I'd like to see your meetings be more civil and sensible, you know? And I think you're, you can do it. It's just, you know, you're just.
It's easy to get caught up in the moment and consider yourself a participant.
Exactly, yeah.
I know exactly how that is and it's very easy to get caught up.
Cause you want to, you want to hear everybody's conversation.
Yeah, and you want to know what's going on and who has something good to say. But we won't all hear it if.
No problem.
So I don't know, maybe there's a, maybe there's a handbook or something. I don't know.
Well, Robert's rules of thumb pretty much would cover everything.
We get brainstorming, you know, how we get going.
I know you're gentle. So there's a, there's a term in place for open conversation and brainstorming.
I think, I think, I think the meeting that you're referring to was a lesson learned by everybody.
Yeah.
And it's when the quorum fall apart.
Yeah.
Okay? And it fell apart pretty easy. And if you're a quiet spoken person, it's even harder to get it together. Joyce Held brought in a gavel for Brian back all month of years.
I forgot about all that, you know?
Bring a gavel if we have to.
It was a tough one there.
Oh, there it is up there. Oh my God. Perhaps it's time to bring it down.
If I, I'll get it right now.
You know, when there's just us, we're good. It's just some very loud people.
Yeah, I just don't, if I need to.
My gardener, top of their lungs and.
No problem.
Good, I think it's, you'll learn a lot.
No problem.
You know, enjoy learning it.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor tonight? All in favor?
You gotta do roll call because you got Stacy.
Yes, and we got, they doing up there tonight?
Hi, how you doing?
Good, good. And at, at our select board meetings, we've gotten to where we, we introduce ourselves at the beginning of every meeting.
Yes.
I would suggest we do that, same thing here at the beginning of every meeting. We do a roll.
I was gonna do that, I just wanted to get through reorganization. And then we can, I was gonna go around the board with it.
Sorry, stole your stuff.
No problem, no, no, no problem at all. So we had a first and a second nomination for, for myself to be chair. Just so you're caught up, I didn't know if you were on there and heard us or not.
Yes, I did.
Okay, so then we're gonna do roll call around tables, around hallway. And Saul in favor of that? Megan?
Hi.
Stacy?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
And I guess I'm an aye myself. Okay, so we'll move, moving on to.
You're gonna nominate Brian for vice, vice chair?
Brian is ex officio, so I don't, you hold position.
So my understanding is there actually is no state statute against this.
Yes, there is.
I was told there wasn't.
Well, you were alone, that's right.
If you have it, I'd by all means, I would love to see it.
It is, um.
Yeah, I've been hearing that too, that there wasn't any statute, but.
There is.
As long as, my understanding was as long as you can impartial and consider yourself impartial, you're allowed to.
That would have to do with voting anyway.
People considering themselves, that's who is voting, right? But I don't think you're.
As a vice chair or a chair or chairing a meeting?
Cause Ronnie could never vote.
See, and Jimmy, we had, but Ronnie.
I thought Ronnie used to vote quite regularly.
No, no, he did not.
He did, I think he did put some votes in.
Uh, wait a minute, I'll tell you.
I think he did quite a few meetings, he was, he would just say yes to it all.
It is.
I don't know if that was good or bad, but.
I think he was supposed to.
24 VSA 42, 4322. Can you let me read what I've got? A planning commission shall have not less than three nor more than nine voting members. All members may be compensated and reimbursed by the municipality for necessary and reasonable expenses. At least a majority of the members of a planning commission shall be residents. The select board of a rural town or not more than two elected or appointed officials of an urban municipality, which we aren't in, are chosen by the legislative body of the urban, oh wait, wait, sorry. I'll just skip that because we're not an urban municipality. Shall be non-voting ex officio members of a planning commission. If a municipality has an, blah, blah, blah.
Was there an exemption to that?
No.
What was the statute? I was just curious, I'm gonna Google search it real quick. 24 VSI? Alright, alright, well, I'm here to observe done.
It's still be a.
I can vote on schedule.
You can't, you can run a meeting.
You can run a meeting.
So you can't run a meeting.
I'm fine with that.
Just can't vote.
If there's no objections to it, I can, I can run a meeting in your absence.
No objections at all.
Sure, no, that's definitely good.
We have a nomination, right?
Yeah, so we had a first and a second on that. We're on the table, Megan?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Brian?
I'm staying.
Oh, Stacy?
Aye.
I'm an aye. And then we'll move on to scribe.
Don't look at me.
I would nominate.
I would gladly.
I second.
Wait, to write, take notes?
Yeah, well. The official scribbler.
If we, if we didn't have a secretary or something, that's basically.
Excuse me.
So, or, or if the chair and vice chair are both out, the scribe would.
Then you would have to run a meeting. As long as we had everybody, still had to have a quorum to do that, but.
Right, so I won't pull the journey.
Even acted over to sue.
Well, we have a first and a second on, on that for Megan. And she, Megan, I'm staying from that. Stacy?
Give it a first.
We have a first, we have a first and a second on for Megan to be scribe, which is secretary, basically.
Okay, I'll give it a first.
What's that?
Did somebody give it a first?
Yes, so there's a first and a second on it.
I'll be the second.
No, there already is a third and a second. It's voting yes or no.
Yeah, we're just voting.
It's just a yes or no?
Yes. Okay, Brian?
Same. Yes.
Yeah, you gotta stay, I keep taking that too. You gotta stay all the time.
I was gonna say just, yeah, going forward, just skip me.
Yes, I will, I'll do that.
Fill in.
Alright, so.
Let's make, let's make this clear about, about the ex officio thing. I want to make sure an ex officio is able to participate in a discussion. And in the problem solved, the problem solved, what we're here to do.
Yeah, that's what, that was the impression I had.
You know, if we have a deadlock in a vote, then that means we gotta get back to work.
Right.
And pick and find, find a solution.
Right, yes, because we don't have an extra vote on that.
Perfectly fine.
But definitely, he's gotta, he's gotta give us his knowledge.
Well, that'd be quick.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to, first thing I want to do is roll call around the table. We'll start with Megan.
Um, my name is Megan Miranda.
Stacy?
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Stacy Boxer.
Hi, I'm Brian Harris.
Jim Winchester.
Fred Mallard.
And I'm John Massey. Okay, so first up here, um, we're going to, again, I'm just gonna reread this. It's for January 18th, 2022, at seven o'clock, um, when we started this. And we're gonna move to number one is approval of agenda.
The date is wrong on the agenda then?
The agenda is.
The, that was, yes, it's not up on there, but it's, that was for February, uh, first.
So can you change the date?
Or I mean, sorry, yes, the agenda is for January 18th.
Both of our agenda posted.
That is for today, whatever today's date is.
Okay. So the date is wrong, it's the way they're saved in our system.
I just wanted to make sure, because otherwise we can't actually hold this.
So we, we changed January 18th to April.
Thank you, Tara.
April, yep, April 5th.
Boy, we've had a long.
It's 7.
And you're right, I'm glad you caught me on that. I'm used to reading it, just reading it off of it.
Going back freezing.
Go on back a couple of months.
So the minutes date is right though? February 1st?
Yes, that's, that is correct. Okay, so it's, it's for April 5th tonight, uh, 2022, for seven o'clock. Approval of agenda is first, and what we have on that agenda is approval of minutes. For, for February 1st.
So it says January 4th.
Yeah, and it's February 1st.
Yeah, I think Tara's making sure that we had the right agenda posted.
Sorry.
Was it not?
Is that a different one?
That's right.
Okay.
I'll get you guys some.
Okay. No, that's alright.
It's okay.
Just wanted to make sure, otherwise everything we just did was null and void.
I knew it was right, but.
Yeah, that's right.
The wrong one when I made the packets.
Alright, so. Thank you. Disregard the top page.
Just disregard the top page. Alright, so we have it corrected. And it is for April 5th, 2022.
Yep.
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
And our approval of agenda, we have approval of minutes for February 1st. We have property discussion on the ordinance. We have discussion about our commission statement, planning commission goals, and then public comment and adjournments. So what for?
I move the motion, we accept the committee until February 1st.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Um, there should be, should be a change on the February 1st minutes. It has me listed as vice chair. I was absent, but that's true. But it should have been clerk or, is clerk or scribe?
Yeah, because technically I was still vice chair.
Right.
Okay.
You're right.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a change.
And Fred is, was clerk. Chief scribbler-ish.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second?
A second.
Okay.
Am I allowed to vote on accepting minutes? Probably not, because I can't participate.
Yeah, I'm gonna say no on that for now.
Okay.
It doesn't really, it's not very specific about what you can or can't.
I know.
That's what I was gonna do, I was gonna search the, uh, VSA in search, like, their definition of ex officio to see if it gives a broader definition.
More like.
Cause it seems kind of odd that you gotta have at least three people, but then it says, if two of them can be active select board members. So at that point, like, it's one person voting, like.
But, you know, it's, I would think that it'd be more for more like, policy type stuff than.
Maybe we can have Tara look that up later, if you get time sometime when they're not busy, just try to get it.
I think, I think if it's an issue that's more very consequential, and it's like, there's some division.
Right.
In the commission about it, then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ex officio being a tiebreaker doesn't, doesn't rub right.
No, it doesn't.
Right. It's like. Kinda like, kinda like a senate thing, you know?
I'm a select board, hey?
Right, yeah. But, yeah, but you know.
But for things like minutes.
Right.
That's what I think, yeah, but who knows?
Everything eventually goes to the select board though.
It's, it's what it's gonna do, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does, but then they decide, you know, they.
Right.
But they shouldn't, in other words, there shouldn't be a voice here that's telling us, you know?
Right.
Like, big stuff like bylaws or something, you know, that's from the select board, that, then we aren't independent.
But being, being able to participate in the discussion is important.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
The most important, the vote, the vote.
Well, let's see, so.
Alright, so we're looking for, uh, vote, we'll go around table, Megan?
Vote?
Uh, yep, on the minute.
Well, I noticed that I said the same thing in the last meeting that I did in this one. I would like to respectfully ask that the chair, make sure that everyone speaks one at a time and not interrupt one another. I come from a family of six and we interrupt like heck, it's awful. And I didn't even know until my 40s that people don't like that, to be interrupted. So I need, I need lots of guidance. I vote yes.
Okay, Stacy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jimmy?
I'm staying.
I was saying I wasn't, wasn't present.
You weren't here. And I'm a yes.
Okay.
But it's four anyway.
That's good enough.
Okay, moving on to approval of minutes for February 1st. Take a second just to review.
Wasn't that?
That's what I was, I thought that's what we just.
Well, no.
I jumped ahead, sorry everyone.
Then this, this is on the minutes.
Oh, the minutes, okay.
I don't have, I don't have.
I'm yes on the agenda.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're.
Stacy doesn't have a copy of the minutes.
Well, it's, pretty much.
Okay.
Was somebody supposed to email them to me?
There's been, um.
There's been a change.
Changeover.
Yes.
You've been, Megan's.
Yeah, we're trying to, do you have a email set up now?
Yes, I do.
Could you send that out to him on that? Are you able to get through?
I'm planning number seven.
Oh, you're planning seven, so that's not me. I forget what number I am.
I think you're nine.
I'm planning three, no, five?
I'm 10.
I'm planning one, sorry.
Sorry.
I didn't realize I was that boring, I'm sorry.
Yeah, are you able to get your emails right now or?
Yes.
She's gonna be sending that over to you. You sent it. It's on its way.
Got it.
Read fast.
And I'll need a motion and a second on that, minutes. Why, he's reading it?
Yeah, I'm moving the motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a first or a second on it? All in favor on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'm myself as an aye. Okay, moving on to discussion of property ordinance again, cleanup of the ordinance. What I want to get, um, we had a whole, I know you were working on a whole ordinance, all pages of it. Do you have a, a copy you can get to everybody, whatever that was that we submitted?
Yeah, well, the thing is, most of that's boilerplate, you know? So you guys had asked me to boil it down to one page. This is the meat of it all. The, the, the first page of any of these ordinances has to be all this league lease about this, who's in charge here, you know? Then the second page, the second page, as it turns out, was all definitions, you know? What is, um, what is a traveled way? What is a script, what is screening? What is this, what is that? And then this part, and then, then it would go to enforcement. And I feel that section four, the duty of owners and occupants is the only thing that we really, I think we, that's the only thing we really need to send to the, to the select board. As what we've really worked at.
Right, well, the reason I had a mask is because when we went to the select board there, we submitted a whole ordinance to them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we, what I wanted to do is so all of the members here could actually look over the whole thing again.
Sure, yeah, I mean.
Just so we're all clear that this is what the ordinance that we're submitting.
But what I'm trying to say is that this is the part where we make the real substantive, um.
And that's.
Noise about, about, you know, what do we want to see done? And, um.
Well, we'll go, we'll go over this tonight here, we'll just discuss, make, make sure what's in here in this part is what we're after. And then, um, if you could, just send it up to Tara on the, the whole thing.
Okay, send it to you.
Yeah, just send it to her and then she'll get it submitted on emails to all of us. And then, um, and then we'll have it as a breakdown so everybody knows exactly what it, what's in it.
Well, I thought we were gonna, um, yeah, okay. I did think we, you, we, I thought we, last time we had talked about having, breaking out a, um, what did he call it? A, um, working meeting on this or something?
The, the select board will have meetings on. They're gonna have meetings on.
We're not gonna be involved in it?
No.
Alright, so we're gonna just decide on this?
Right, so what we're gonna do is clarify that this is what is correct going to them. Like, Mike, Mike had questions about it and stuff on the select board when we were there. Just to fill you guys in here that weren't, didn't go to the meeting, we had a meeting with a select board. Me and Megan were there, we presented the ordinance to them and they had lots of questions. They saw stuff in it that they didn't like or they didn't feel should have been in it. From what Mike was saying at the time, he was reading things that he didn't agree with being there, that he'd remember seeing in it. So I want to get it clarified so that doesn't, you know, doesn't look like we're just throwing something at them. I want to make sure that we have it correct going to.
So wait, you, you, we were at the same meeting and what was Mike disagreeing with?
He said he was seeing the stuff like about cars and all that kind of stuff in it still.
Oh.
And I, but I didn't have a copy of it, I don't know.
I see what you're saying. Well, several people have mentioned that to me, that the, um, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns has a kind of a template that you would use. Everybody all, everywhere uses it. And it, they really focused on cars for some reason.
Well, we don't.
And I tried to just, I tried a lot of that out.
We don't have to hear, but if it was in that ordinance when we submitted it, they're just gonna have to chop it apart anyway. They wouldn't be able to go to meetings with it.
I think I chopped quite a lot of the car stuff out.
But, I mean, if that's in there, that, this, the select board already has an ordinance.
In this first?
Yeah.
So we didn't need to have that.
This first paragraph, A, the word junk is mentioned three times. And it's like, uh, actually a one sentence paragraph. The word junk is in there three times. And junk is, I think, a subjective word. And it can be.
Right, and that's where you would have to have a definition case to really lay out what it would be.
It can be taken as an offense.
Yeah. I hear what you're saying. So it is, I think it is in the definition. I don't.
Yeah, but it doesn't, I, I'm thinking.
Obviously what we have right here is just an excerpt.
The deal.
Yeah, yeah, this is the middle of it, yeah.
But if you look at that, that last line too, it does say junk motor vehicles in excess of three, that's already an ordinance.
Yeah, that's our.
So you want to take any mention of motor vehicles out?
Any, any mention of that has to.
Remove the word junk first and see how, just, how easy it reads without that.
Right.
And cut it down.
Litter, refuse, garbage, solid waste, trash, alright. Just because you think junk is.
All that stuff.
Can I say something?
Sure. Go ahead.
The meaning of junk is old or discarded articles that are considered useless or of little value.
And that's, and which would be refuse, garbage, solid waste, trash, all these things that are already mentioned. So you could.
I was gonna say, just in what Stacy just said about the definition of junk, of little value or use.
Well, no, that's a, that's a very subjective term.
That's why I.
You might not have a use for it, but I do.
Right.
Yeah, that's why I had just said, even though we have a definition of screening elsewhere, and D, I wrote screening. If owner, agent, uh.
Occupant.
Say a comment, occupant or unless he deems above name material to be of use or value, he or she is required to screen it from a view of traveled way and abutting property occupants. Okay, so in other words.
Right.
You can say it's valuable, that doesn't matter, you still have to screen it. That's all, that's all we're saying. So you're saying just the word junk is.
Take it out. You don't need it because you, you got, you listed examples.
You got occupants, lessy, to keep.
Litter, refuse.
His or her property free of litter, refuse.
Refugees.
Solid waste, trash.
Okay, we'll take junk out everywhere along in here, alright.
Are you not including cars in this?
Cars.
There's already a separate ordinance for, for cars.
The ordinance or bylaw?
We have a. Bylaw, I'm sorry.
It's a bylaw, let's, let's get our terms straight.
Yes, I apologize.
Yes.
I mean, there's also bylaws about junk and stuff, but.
Yeah, and I think they're poorly written, they're written by other people, and it's like.
So I think the whole point of the ordinance is, correct me if I'm wrong, but the point of the ordinance is that the ordinance would supersede zoning bylaws. So, and somebody that has, I don't want to go into specifics, if somebody has a.
Table with a lot of.
Something permissible under the zoning, but really, the, the ordinance could still affect it.
Okay, so that was A. Are there any other issues with that? It's a responsibility of each owner, agent, occupant, or lessy, that means a renter, to keep his or her property free of litter, refuse, garbage, solid waste, and trash. He or she shall be responsible for removing litter, refuse, garbage, solid waste, or trash accumulating on said property.
Yep.
Okay, clear, simple. B, litter is prohibited. Again, it's a little repetitive, but.
Get the point across.
No owner, agent, occupant, or lessy of any property shall allow the storage or accumulation of litter, refuse, garbage, waste, or trash on the exterior of said property outside of a receptacle that is covered, secured, and maintained. So it's to prevent blowing, spilling, scattering, or leaking of the contents therein. And I changed this to, from whereas to since, somebody suggested that to me and I said, don't get so fancy. Since plastic bags, even when tied, are subject to animal invasion and or degradation by weather, they do not constitute a covered and secured receptacle. And then, just end the sentence there, and, and then exterior. And then, just end the sentence there, and, and then exterior accumulation of bags, or, or, for this reason, or whatever, what did I put? I'm still working on. Accordingly, accordingly, exterior accumulation of bags containing trash is not permitted. Okay, we don't have anything like that right now, and I think we need it, don't we?
Nothing stating.
That people can't put their garbage in bags and leave it out in the yard.
Isn't a major problem in.
Yeah, yeah.
In other towns, to be fair, but it's very much a problem to us here at this table.
Okay, so that one you were in agreement with, Fred, okay. Accordingly, exterior, I hear guys, I have a, like, here's a better, a new draft that's changing. Exterior accumulation of bags containing trash is not permitted. And then it says this re, obvious, this is very obvious, this requirement shall not apply to an area designated and approved by the town as a permitted disposal site. So you can accumulate bags at the dump.
Well, they're in a hopper, so, yes, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're, yeah.
Yeah, but there have been times, it's very rare, but when there's a delay in getting pickup to where we'll let you kind of pile it to the side, and they'll scoop it and dump it into the fresh dumpster. Has it happened in a long time, but I have seen it.
So, and then the next one is maybe a little bit more, you know, demanding. We're saying that people have to pick up litter, basically, around, you know, blown litter, if, because, and I, I spoke to someone whose neighbor, the, the, the garbage blew out in the yard and down into the stream, and it lay there for months, until finally they went, the neighbor, went and picked it up because they couldn't stand it anymore. But, so that's the idea behind this one.
Scenario is like, somebody's yard has garbage, and they didn't put it there, so they say, I'm not picking it up?
No, sorry.
It's like what kids do.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, it's like, right, and, 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 you know, I, I understand, and I think maybe we even might, I don't, I don't know, have an emergency number for elderly people and disabled people and people who really can't get to it.
Have been trying to help, like Joel was telling me, I spoke with Joel earlier, was telling me they went and picked up trash, I think off of Cedar Hill. Somebody dumped a bunch of garbage.
Oh, yeah, they'll do, oh, yeah, I've had, I've called Joel many times, I mean, not many, but at least five times, and there's a TV over there on Mount Anthony Road, there's a, you know, and they'll come and pick it up. But they don't have time to, you know.
How's the toilet bowl doing?
What?
How's the toilet bowl doing?
Oh, that's gonna be a logo landmark, that will be on Google Maps for a few.
Yeah, it's really nice to have our, right by our new town hall, we've got a toilet bowl and a, and whatever that other thing is.
The suggestion box.
I went to my grandson's graduation in Potsdam, New York, and we're pulling into town, and there's two yards full of toilet seats. And, well, I said to my grandson, I said, what's going on there? And he says, evidently, he got in an argument with the people in the planning board or something like that, and he just started putting these things out, and there's probably an acre of them, so be careful.
Decorations, yeah.
And I see one sitting somewhere today.
Is it the end of Land Road?
Yeah.
That's one on Center Street, right here.
It can be permanent landmarks around town.
Right at the end of the, right on the corner there, there's a yard with a toilet.
So he just took each one and set them out, and set them out, and so, I always do.
Well, I mean, alright, Fred is talking to me, just now, we were talking about what makes people do this stuff and so forth. And, you know, I, I appreciate, like, you telling me that junk is really an offensive term, so we'll, we'll take it out. You know, that's easy to do, right? Like you say, it's, God knows. I mean, and this, you know, this is, you know, some of, most of this, the meat of this is from Essex Junction's junk, junk ordinance, trash ordinance. So, you know, I have no problem removing redundancies that are offensive, but, but, whatever we, whatever we're gonna do here, is that, we're gonna offend somebody, somebody's gonna not like it.
It's gonna happen.
We, we just have to do something.
It'll only last just a while, but it'll offend a few people, and then they're gonna realize that it's, it's time to start doing this. And they think things will start to swing the other way.
Yeah, and I think when people, you know, when people start to see that, you know, like, the, that the, the people who enforce this are really fair and kind, and, and that, you know, their neighbors want to help, and that everybody's gonna just like it better, you know? And, yes, we still have some really.
In that, in that discussion, I, I had a call from a landlord who was providing rubbish removal services for his tenants and receptacles, and he's contracted with Casella to pick it up. Certain, not all, certain tenants will refuse to use them. They will still pile their stuff outside their house.
Oh, yeah.
Why? Why is that?
It's a condition, I think, that a lot, some people.
I mean, I.
With, I guess, or have, I don't know if they're suffering, or they're just enjoying it, but it's a condition.
Yeah, there's oppositional personality, there's.
And how to deal with that stuff. A town with a budget, with a lot of money, could hire a counselor to talk to people, I guess, but it's like, that's what's happening.
You're gonna run into those, that's gonna be a tough one either way to go.
But at least we have something on the books.
He asked for my help in dealing with that, and it's like, I'm still puzzling on how exactly I can go and help him with that.
I don't know the specifics of that, but I would almost think if he's already paid for the cleanups.
Thank you.
So I don't know the specifics, but I would think if he's already paid for a cleanup once, and they signed the lease agreements, is there wording in the lease agreement that they agree to use those receptacles and not pile refuse? If there is, they violated their lease, you can serve an eviction notice.
Not easy in Vermont.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go further with that. I used to own a trailer park, and I had, I was bound by a lot of state rules, a lot of them. One was providing good trash. And that, what happened in that was I put a dumpster up there, I had to physically lock it because people were coming in from outside, dumping everybody else. So I put a lock on it, and then I wound up having to put a camera on it, because, again, family members would, here, go throw your stuff in it, and they had McKee and Dave go throw stuff. I wound up catching a lot of people, took a little process to do it all, but then they started saying, well, I wasn't providing a service for them. It was there. I even called the state, I had to go this whole route, called the state, told them, come down, you can see it's here. They're, they're not putting their stuff in it. They were gonna complain, but they didn't put their stuff in it. Got them on camera, not even going to the dumpster. I mean, so, so they were, they would walk over and set it in the side of the roadway, but not walk over to the dumpster and put it in it. So it, it's a process like that that I had to deal with, but it was required by the state to have a dumpster. So they, if it's there, they are supposed to use it. If they don't use it, yes, they, you can go back and, I wound up having to evict that, that person because they just wouldn't follow the rule on it. That's what was there, and I had a written lease on it too, so.
A lot of people are protected no matter what, no matter what they do, what they're offending, what they do. They're protected, you can't evict them, you cannot really.
I know, I know, it's hard to evict, and.
You can't really, you really can't, can't even give them a good talking to, really, you know?
It's tough in the park.
You gotta dance around it a lot, and, but I think getting this wording right is gonna help a lot.
Okay, so we're on C?
Go ahead, Brian.
So my, my thought on that is, I'm just saying, if the landowner, landlord has options to pursue this through private means versus automatically turning to the town, because it almost seems like they're turning to the town because they either, one, don't want to be the bad guy, or two, don't want to incur the financial aspect of it. At that point, I'm reluctant for the town to be involved.
So i- is there some way we could let landlords know that this needs to be in the lease? Isn't it in most leases?
It is, and it's in, it's in, it's in the, it's in the.
Bylaws?
The bylaws.
Yeah.
Yeah, the girl who works for me just said, when she went in her house, she listened to anything. She had to sign things that she could do to get the, I said, do you get the property tax bill? And that's the key here, who gets the property tax bill? And then it was a lot of things that we're talking about tonight, and this is in Bennington. She's gonna bring me a copy of this.
What do you mean, a copy? I don't follow you.
Well, she was making a closing, she was buying a house.
Oh, oh, I see.
Okay, and then there came, we pay taxes.
Right.
And on there was a list of things that she had to sign that she couldn't do. As trash, things like that, storage of trailers, someone living in a trailer for a period of time. It was a lot of things, and I said, bring that in, I'd like to see it.
Yeah.
Yes, Bennington has a lot of restrictions like that.
Now, when you buy a property, you're signing that, acknowledging that you know that those laws exist.
And they give you a copy of those rules.
That's interesting.
Yeah, that is interesting.
So the thing is.
Yeah, I know, I know, back, that's what happened on a property, and actually it was Leo Aggerty at the time.
Yeah.
Bought a piece up there, and they did the same thing. He was gonna go work on it, parked his trailer, they said, you can't park your trailer. It was in the bylaws, so, they just said, no, you can't park them here, you gotta move them that fast. So, and they just went there and set it, and.
I mean, granted, Bennington does spend more money on enforcement.
Right. They really don't do, as far as I, from what I've talked to up there, they really don't do a lot of enforcement where they have to physically go out. They have, you know, it's usually a select board or, or not.
I thought they had a full-time health officer, full-time.
Right, they have the same thing that we got here, they just send them out.
Also has, has blighted properties.
It's getting better, though.
I drive around for Meals on Wheels, and I see plenty of piles of junk.
What we have, as a small town, we've got people working part-time.
Yeah.
People who are working full-time and then extra part-time hours on a sky, and you can only stretch so far.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, a lot of this, I, I think Powell's at a level where it's like, almost we have to start talking about a full-time enforcer for these things, you know, and that's gonna.
One of the things, that's what I want to do, once we have this set, I want to go to, I want to go, go to the select board, set it up so we can go there. And I want to, you know, obviously, we'll get this to them and make sure that, that starts to go forward. But I want to talk about some of the funding that the town has gotten, if we could set aside. I already mentioned it at one of the other board meetings that I went to. If we could get a, a small fund to do that, that might be another thing, it's just saying, listen, about, we might need somebody, an enforcement officer, or somebody to do these types of things if they come up. I just don't know how, how readily available yet it'll come up. I mean, I know it's gonna have, it's gonna come up, for sure.
Sure.
I just don't know, I don't think it'll be a daily thing, it's gonna be, it'll, I think it'll come slower, huh? Go ahead.
Yeah, no, that's not gonna happen fast, yeah. So are you, you have other employment that you do half-time?
I have, I'm a full-time employee, I work full-time.
He works at MyMel.
Yeah, I work full-time, and in my, what time I have left, and still have somewhat of a normal life, I deal with this stuff.
How's, how's it going for you? Are you getting tired of it?
My dream, you know, I am very tired of it. My dream is it'll be dealt with and cured, it won't, it won't.
Well, and I, I, I don't, like I said, I think it's gonna go relatively.
I gotta get some water.
I think it's gonna go a little hard at first, because some are just gonna be reluctant, I think, you know? I think at first, if we had Fred or Mike go out as those two positions, go out and just have a chat with somebody. If there's a report coming in, they just go chat with them, say, this is what we're trying to accomplish. Can we work with you on this? And I think for most part, most people are gonna say, yeah, I'll, I'll do this. I don't think they're gonna be really, really strict and say, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do it for you.
I, I think if we can get some action on Route Seven, I think a lot of people start seeing one.
That would make, yeah, that's what I hear the complaints about.
That's where we come back to the ordinances, to give the town the weapon.
Yeah, exactly.
Tools to work with, that has the ability to be enforceable.
Okay, so, I just, can I, would you want me to, like, boil this down to, like, like, five sentences for you to hand out to people? With that, you know, so that people know, look, if you really want to get technical.
Type of thing, yeah, we could do something like that, I mean, that would help, I'm sure, help Fred out. What we, what I think we have to do first, is let's just get.
Let's do this, okay.
Let's get this straight, so that we can get it in, and get that working on, and, and then we could go back, another meeting, or next meeting or something, and just do a cheat sheet for this, which would help them, I mean, this is, actually, let's wait until it gets approved, I would think. Then, then we can, we'll have exact one to work off of, and then we could draw it up. Because it's a select board, choose it up a little bit. Go ahead, Stacy.
Did I hear that select board wanted to open this up for public comment?
No, we're nowhere near that yet.
No, they're gonna have to have several meetings on it, where they do public meetings, before they can approve anything.
So basically, we're, we're giving them an ordinance, and they're going to somehow enforce this ordinance?
No, the, the process would be, the, the planning commission is essentially submitting an idea. It'd be a hashed out idea, the select board then discusses it, decides whether or not they want to pursue it. And if they want to pursue it, then they, if they want to change anything, they work through that, then they have to have a series of public comment presentations, where they open it up for the public, the public gets a chance to come in, weigh in on it. If there's enough public pushback, the select board has to go, make changes, do the public comment again, then after that, they can put it up for a vote.
Wow.
That's the process for all. It's the legal process.
And so we went through the.
Sounds as complicated as the Senate and the Congress.
Government, that's why.
Yeah, try to get anything done.
I'd like to look at the Bennington thing.
Yes.
I'm gonna bring it tomorrow, because the technicalities of it, she was just paddling off some things, which I found interesting, but I'd like to see how official it looks.
Yeah, if we can get a copy of that, probably, we can, we can go over on a next meeting too, just to clarify for, for that enforcement part.
Yeah.
So on this one, on C, this one is kind of, it's addressed to proprietors and operators of any business, but I think it should apply to, I don't know, I mean, it's kind of a lot, you know.
What kind of business are you talking about, Bill?
Yeah, right.
Junkyard?
It shall be the responsibility of each proprietor and each operator of any business, industry, or institution, like a school, to keep the surroundings, surrounding area free of litter, refuse, garbage.
And that same thing, junk, vehicles, that.
Yeah, solid waste or trash.
So that would be like how Dollar General, at the end of it, their parking lot, you can't clean around.
Surrounding areas include, yeah, sidewalks, roads and alleys, traveled ways, grounds, parking lots, loading, loading docks.
I know Jimmy's got so much of it laying around his house down there and around the front.
I think, I think as this, as this.
I mean, it keeps this place beautiful.
As this reads, I think it would be a hard sell, because.
I think it could be, I think it could be a little bit friendlier, I'll, I'll grant you that, but.
It's your responsibility, you have a business, it's your responsibility to keep your neighbors, in front of your neighbors' business clean.
No, 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 you know, I don't think it really says that.
Well, surrounding areas include public and private sidewalks, roads, alleyways, travelways. So it's supposed to expand that, what the definition could be.
Business, you know.
How do you do it, how do you do that with Saint Visons and Jellies? You got tires, you got things that departed a business, you know, you're taking off and.
Right, well, there's, I think, I think if we left something like that, it would just, we're directing it as, like, you know, some paper, somebody dropped papers around.
Okay. Well, as far as tires are the business, I think Bennington had to create a separate ordinance that businesses had to keep the tires in a container.
Stored someplace.
Sure, well, why, why shouldn't they?
Yeah, but I'm just saying that, like, they had to actually physically address that separately.
I think we just need to stick right now to getting the small stuff.
Yeah, let's, yeah, address the household refuse, the garbage, and then if we need to expand it from there, we will.
I'm just looking, I'm looking at, listen.
Saying, like.
How do you enforce it? Any incidentally blown or spilled.
I think taking out.
Trash shall be promptly removed. By who?
Well, as far as the enforcement goes, I think that's gonna be a whole separate issue, because you're gonna have, what the, what the rule's gonna say, and then you're gonna have to create what the, the punishment and enforcement aspect of it's gonna be, whether it's, whether it's, do you find? If you let me find, how you do that, and all that.
Right, I think Fred knows that, because he's the enforcer.
I don't see, I don't see me driving down the road. I go, I go to the gym and say, Jim, you gotta go get that garbage out of the road.
No, but how about, we had.
But I mean, alright, so, yeah, but if you state it. But I mean, all right, so, yeah, but if you state it, and you tell people, this is what you're supposed to do.
We've already done this.
These are your duties.
We've already done this.
Let's, let's.
Go ahead, Jim.
We, the selectmen have done this. We've got people that come from out of town, with rubbish, and they're supposed to be covered. Have we, have we stopped anybody yet?
I don't know.
I, I, I'd like to know, Bennington's fine. Because I still see these trucks coming through with no, little or no cover.
To me, I don't, I don't see it, and I haven't seen the latest sheriff's report to know whether or not they've issued any fines to that.
I, I, I watch them, and, you know, I know the guys, and, you know, it's, it's not, it's not good.
All right, so what about C then? Do you wanna just delete that whole section?
I just see that as, as the thing that, where it's like, it's not mine, I'm not picking it up. It's not mine, no, it's not mine.
Well, that's, that's.
We're saying.
I know.
It's gotten us to where we are.
I know, I, I understand that. And I, and I, I agree with you in spirit.
I, I don't think we should necessarily remove it.
That's not gonna do.
I'm, I'm in favor of keeping it in, only because it, we have to put something in place regardless.
Yeah.
Are they gonna say that? Yeah, I agree.
Where, where it says, responsibility of each proprietor and each operator of any business, industry, or institution, to keep the surrounding area free of litter, I would maybe change that to, to keep their business property free of litter.
The area surrounding their business?
No, that's.
I would limit it to their property, because I, I don't wanna create a gray area where suddenly, like, the people that just moved into Rogers Roost feel like they have to go over on their.
Okay, good, okay, so what we're saying here is we're addressing, we're addressing not just homes.
Their, their own.
Okay, gotcha.
Their own.
All right.
I think we're just saying.
It shall be the responsibility of each proprietor and operator, business, industry, or institution, to keep their property free of litter, garbage, solid waste or trash. Surrounding areas, oh, so.
Sorry. Expand, expand the surrounding areas later, later day.
Take that off.
For now.
Uh, yeah.
How you do with it?
Surrounding areas include prob, public and private sidewalks.
Well, I think we should include their sidewalks around.
Well, yeah, their, their sidewalks.
Okay, so.
But like, we don't actually have sidewalks in town.
No, yeah, roads and alleys. We don't have any traveled ways, grounds, parking lots.
I would say take out roads and alleyways, because, again, we don't have alleyways here. It's gonna be a business lot. It's just a lot where you're at.
Uh, we do want, though, their traveled ways, that's the road.
Yeah, because, yeah, their traveled ways, that's, that's their driveways and parks.
Parking lots, loading and unloading areas, and all vacant lots, leased by them, okay.
Yeah, like, that, that I'm fine with.
What about any accidentally blown or spilled litter or trash will be promptly removed? I think we leave it in.
You know, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think we might need to add a better definition of what's considered timely, because.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Uh, only because, obviously, middle winter, two foot of snow in a field, subject blows out there, I don't expect somebody from Dollar General to charge out there and pick it up.
Okay.
Obviously, I would say, okay, you can wait till spring.
Right.
Yeah.
So that.
Common sense.
Right, right.
All right, well.
Well, common sense isn't as common anymore, so it's.
I agree with you.
But that's why.
What do we do, then? We leave it as written?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think anybody's gonna be there going, hey, there's a piece of trash out in the middle of your yard, go get it.
But the way, but the way, write it right, it could be interpreted that way.
Right. I, I agree with you.
Uh, so do we add a phrase, like, any accidentally blown or spilled litter or trash will be promptly removed to a covered receptacle, weather-allowing?
I, no, I, I, that's too technical, I think, don't you? I really don't think you need.
What, what Stacy?
I was gonna say, I think you're getting carried away with this wind-blown trash.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are going on, but we're very.
We're windy town.
Okay, so we'll just take that whole line out?
Yeah. Uh, you, 'cause it doesn't really, yeah, I, I see what he's saying. So remove the whole how it got there, it doesn't matter how it got there, it's there, you gotta clean it up.
Well, any accidentally blown or, or take blown out. Any accidentally spilled litter or trash.
We have.
Promptly removed.
Yeah.
I would just, just say something simple, is any accidentally spilled litter or trash shall be promptly removed. So if you just, if you, you know, it blew out of your car, please go grab it, you know, common sense would say, pick your, you know, mess up.
So this, this, this points as the responsible person would be the proprietor or operator of any business, industry, or institution.
I think in most part, you're gonna wind up not really doing much for businesses, 'cause most people, I think, that run a business are gonna say, hey, there's a piece of garbage blowing around my yard.
Clean it up.
Catch your employee, throw him stuff, or you're gonna fire him.
Right, they're just gonna do it because they don't wanna.
Part of your job.
It's more, it makes their business more, well, you know, attractive.
Sure.
And that's why Jimmy keeps.
Yeah.
Well, I think. So, um, all right, so then.
Well, I mean, somebody get, they get out in another truck, they have garbage showing on the floor of their truck, and they get out and they just let it blow around in the yard.
Oh, we did that.
It's really not his responsibility to do it, but he would come out and go, oh, there's a piece of paper blowing around. I'm sure he's gonna walk over and go, throw it in the garbage, you know? I mean, it's just, that's cleaning up his yard.
You don't walk these roads too much, do you? Yeah.
Or he's gonna yell at the guy when it comes by again.
Well.
Is there a town cleanup day?
Yes, there's a statewide cleanup day.
On the first Saturday.
Volunteer?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's on, uh, the first Saturday of May, so it's, I think, May 7th this year.
You can get garbage bags from Tom Dog?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the transfer station, sorry.
And there's lots of that this year.
Yeah.
A lot of places you can go get cleaned up.
I hope so.
All right, so.
So screening.
Yeah, we already talked about that, and I think that one's not, I felt that's not too bad right there.
Yeah, I mean.
It's simple enough.
It's many.
If you, if it, if you want it, and you're gonna keep it, cover it up.
Screen it, put it away, put it in.
And then, if I remember right, we had a better definition of what screening is considered.
It's in the definition section.
Definition.
Because we weren't gonna allow tarps to just cover your, your trash.
Well, we said that.
We're talking fancy and stuff.
But we, um, uh, we said screening was, um.
Vegetation.
Planted bushes or trees that are already there, or bushes, um, sheds, or, um, covered receptacles or, or fencing.
Like, a very broad list.
So then the, the last one is the outdoor sales, or flea markets, shall remove all evidence of sale and merchandise by 5:00 PM of the day following close of sale and between all sales. And this is, as, as we all know, and, uh, I, I just feel like, covering merchandise with the tar pollen does not fulfill this requirement. And then I'm, this ordinance does not apply to farm stands and outdoor sale of agricultural products.
We have a lot of daylight after 5:00 PM during the summer. Um, and you might, you're having a great day and.
Yeah, the time is not.
I was gonna say, just change it to after dark.
Home and a lot of money.
No longer than one hour after sunset, how about that?
Yeah.
Or let's say.
Yeah.
Yeah. By, by, by dusk, can I just say dusk?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now.
I was thinking, like, the hunting term, you can't shoot a half hour after sunset.
Could you have, could you have this turned into two days instead of one day? Because suppose someone wants to do a tag sale on a Saturday and a Sunday?
Oh, that's, yeah, yeah, that's true. They just, they do their sale.
Right, I was gonna say that, too, this is like dictating one.
But I think what Stacy means, if, like, say, somebody sets up for a weekend tag sale, they don't wanna have to drag everything in their house just to put it back out the next morning.
No, right.
But put a limit on it, you can't have it out there for more than two or three days.
Yeah, yeah, three more than that, yeah. Yeah, let's go.
So where do we put that in? Outdoor sales of, or flea markets?
Remove all evidence of sale and merchandise.
By dusk.
Uh, by 5:00 PM of the, I don't know.
It's dusk, we're changing it. Dusk of the day following close of sale. It, I mean, uh, you know, we can, sales can last for more than one day, in other words, should I add that in?
But you don't wanna set it up where you got a, a five-month lock sale.
That's right.
Well, so, you could better define outdoor sales as outdoor sale is no longer than three days.
Okay.
Three consecutive days.
Should we put something in about, on that? 'Cause I know, I know what we're gonna run into on that.
I know.
Um, should we write something for permitting on that, if you're going to be longer? For.
You mean, like, a small business-type deal?
For reasons like that, what we're, we're, we know that.
Well, I'm thinking, like, what about the person?
Out there all summer long.
Well, we have zoning bylaws that address if you're gonna sell stuff outside, like, if you're selling, like, picnic tables and stuff, there's rules that apply to that.
But, but how about the person who puts up something for free and leaves it there?
That, I'm good.
I know, I know, but, you know.
Did, correct me, did we actually have something in the other?
I would say that would fall, you could fall under this.
I did address it in the original draft.
If you had it for sale, or, or you put it for free, it can't be more than that.
You know, because, uh, I just, I just, it was like a whole can of worms, and I thought.
And that's what it is.
You know?
If your free item doesn't go to a nice home, don't move it to a pull-off down, down the road.
Oh, wow, they're like an invitation to dump.
You know what, I would say, as far as, like, items being left for free, give, give them two days. If somebody hasn't picked up what you're offering for free in two days, you gotta get rid of it.
Yeah.
Okay, can I add that to the outdoor sales thing?
Yeah, I would put it there, I think.
Pull-offs, like, political signs.
Well, in that case, then we just let the state go around and pick it all up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I still have that, I know what's coming.
Objected to two, I, I was just throwing the number out there.
What's wrong?
I mean, 'cause honestly, I think that's reasonable. You have to do a tag sale, you leave a chair out there, and it's, it sits out there more than two days and nobody's taken it? Obviously, nobody wants.
Having a tag sale, you're doing really good, you sell everything and you're happy.
Yeah.
If you don't sell anything, you don't wanna keep having a tag sale.
Right, it's not working out.
Break it up and.
Yeah, usually when I do tag sales, by the end of the day, you don't wanna pick it up, prices start dropping, and suddenly, everything's free. And then what's left is like, well, that's going to the dump.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, so, um, then at the end of outdoor sales, um, I, I think maybe, or maybe it should fit in, um, after it does not, putting a tarp over it doesn't fulfill the requirement. Items being left as free must be removed after two days, if not taken.
Yeah.
If not grabbed up.
But did you, you put a, you put a time in, or how many days? Did you, you wrote something for that? For how many, it's gonna be out there?
Items being left as free must be removed after two days, if not taken.
That's after the end of the three, the, up to three days that you're given.
So you got three days.
For you. Oh, well, you're asking me, okay, out, all right, let me read it again. I'll give you, I'll give you a perfect. Outdoor sales or flea markets may last no longer than three consecutive days. And proprietor, whatever, shall remove all evidence of sale and merchandise by dusk of the day following close of sale and between all sales. Covering merchandise with a tar pollen does not fulfill this requirement of, um, items being left as free must be removed after two days if not taken. This ordinance does not apply to farm stands and outdoor sales.
Okay, so they add, they get their three days to have their sale. At the end of the three days, you gotta pack your shit up. If you're saying you're leaving it out there for free for somebody to take, that gives them an extra two days before they gotta clean it out of there. So essentially, you're giving somebody five days of letting it be in their yard.
And then what if they put it out the following weekend for sale?
Well, if they've taken it back in for the few days and they've hidden, they can go back out there with it, then obviously, it starts to clock over for them. But if they wanna keep putting the work into hiding it, more consequences.
And Andrew.
There's, we're gonna run into options.
Oh, yeah, no, no question, this is a kid who's been right.
All right, so if you could get that rewritten, then, get us out. More and smaller. I, it is.
Listen, we could say here and iron out the language right now, if you wanna try to do that.
Well, it's, I don't know, we just did.
Yeah, I think you did.
I'm not making.
I, I think that's.
Well, I, my thought was to help reduce the chance that we have to just keep re-changing it, is.
Well, okay, let's go over it again, let's start at the top. Duty of owners and occupants. General requirement, it shall be the responsibility of each owner, agent, occupant, or less seen. So that covers everybody.
Mm-hmm.
To keep his or her property free of litter.
I, I'm sorry, can we remove the gender-specific?
No.
Which?
Why should we do that?
Because I can already see where somebody might object to it.
That's just crazy.
Because it's been objected to by individuals on certain other town documentation.
No, I want, and I, I put a lot of work into this.
I, I know you didn't, I know you didn't even get it, and I'm not picking on you for it, I'm just saying, I.
I like, I like.
I'm just, I personally, I'm personally, I, I am perfectly fine with it. But I already know, having been on the other end of it, people object to it.
I like the word responsibility or duty, um, in the title.
I like duty, it's an old word, and people kinda, but it's what it is.
Well, there's a military man here.
Duty is, you have to, responsibility means.
Yeah, it's a fact.
Irresponsible, like, self, self-monitor yourself.
I'm fine with duty.
Yeah.
Do you wanna vote on it?
No.
It's a suggestion, I would agree with it.
Anything I say isn't so precious that I can't let it go.
I hear you, you, you said some good stuff, I mean, I didn't really.
Well, that's why we're all having the discussion to try to iron, that's why I suggested we go over it to.
Okay, good, so then he or she shall be responsible for removing litter, refuse, garbage, solid waste, or trash accumulating on said property. Try to remove it, can't leave it. Then the second one is. You can't leave your bags, your garbage bags out, you have to secure it and put it in a.
Hold on one second.
Yes, sir.
Everybody don't, everybody agrees with that one?
Well, we, you, you.
We agree with A, okay.
So then.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, bring it around, good, okay.
Stacy, we do in fact have a bylaw that about addressing junk cars. You know, I, my understanding of the difference between a bylaw and an ordinance is that ordinance jumps right to. Enforcement a little quicker than that, coins them at court.
Right, bylaws are just put in place, that's for something to follow, but an ordinance enforces and.
A little more efficient.
More direct.
They were more likely. Ordinance was passed without specifically doing junk cars. And if we want, we need to address junk cars later on, let's cover that separately. But let's get something that we can actually get past.
I mean, Angie has.
That's why I wanna, I wanna make sure that there's nothing in it. I think that's probably what Mike picked up on.
Yeah.
Cause it probably said something like that, or said motor vehicles and that's.
That's what people are gonna focus on.
That's the first thing he pulled out, so.
To me, what's in my heart right now is the garbage.
I think that's what we, that's what we targeted this thing.
That's what the townspeople want.
So I think that B is really the best part is that, that people telling people, no, I'm sorry, tying your garbage in bags, in plastic bags and leaving it out in your yard. Is not on. And you will see people who put leaves in garbage bags and put them around the foundation of their house. And you know, you know that. So you're not gonna, I mean, we don't need to address.
If the bag is bungee corded to the side of their basement wall, then I would say.
Please, don't give them any ideas. So, so since plastic bags even when tied are subject to animal invasion. And or degradation by whether they do not constitute a covered and secured receptacle. Accordingly, exterior accumulation of bags containing trash is not permitted. Okay, except for at the transfer station.
Trash bins at Walmart are cheap.
Well. I, I don't know.
Inexpensive, nothing's cheap anymore.
So litter prevention and control, let's go, let's hammer this out a little better, cause I'm not. In adjacent and surrounding areas, shall be the responsibility of each proprietor. And each operator of any business, industry, or institution to keep their property free of litter refuse, just to be. So it's really just kind of surrounding areas of trash.
Surrounding areas remind me, well, my neighbor's yard.
Yeah, right, so, so we, we're assuming that by surrounding areas, we mean right around the building.
Immediate area.
So we took.
Say around immediate area. Let's say it that way, around immediate area.
Adjacent and immediate areas, that's it.
That way you're not trying to, like you're saying.
Immediately surrounding, how about immediately.
Two hundred yards out.
Adjacent is again your neighbor.
So we took that whole sentence about surrounding areas include blah blah. Okay, so surrounding. This includes traveled ways, grounds, parking lots. Traveled ways, I don't like that. Let's just. This includes grounds, parking lots, loading and unloading areas, and all vacant lots, leased, et cetera, okay?
And taking out travel ways.
Yeah, I, I don't think I understand.
I think that might be like walkways. That's how, I'm just saying how I would.
Okay, let's say walkways.
Where I travel, so if I jump in my car and I travel.
Walkways, grounds, parking lots, loading and unloading areas, and all vacant lots, blah blah blah. Okay, is that good?
I think that'd be fun.
Does that work as a business owner?
Yeah, I, I, you know, a vacant lot's a vacant lot though, anybody can throw anything on it, you know? Vacant lot.
But if you, if you.
But yeah, but if you're held responsible for.
No, no, I'm, I'm the responsible.
Please by such establishments. Okay, so, and then what happened with any accidentally blown or spilled litter or trash will be promptly removed? Yeah, I mean, if it blows in your yard or your business, well.
Or somebody drops a bag of garbage off.
Someone throws the same bag out, but at the end of the day, you pick it up.
Yeah, I think most parts.
My camera.
If you, if somebody sees it, I think you'll start getting more people to say, hey, oh, you just dropped a bag out of your car.
And if you've got a camera and you take it, and they say, F you, I'm not picking it up, be like, well, I'm gonna call the cops, I got you on film. You can get fined by the state police.
Right, that's, that's, that's a whole, yeah.
I've brought in films to stick with us. And it, it's gotten absolutely nowhere.
They don't prove it, I paid somebody, take that away.
They go and talk to somebody they know. At the most.
That's next then, we gotta get after.
Okay, so then we have the screening thing and we all agree to that, right?
Yep, screening, I think.
Do you think it's valuable, screen the damn stuff. Okay, and then outdoor sales or flea markets may last no longer than three consecutive days. And shall remove, and propriet, our operators shall remove? Let's just end the sentence there, normally in three days. Operators shall remove, or whoever.
Maybe back it down to two days, because you know what?
Well, I'm only thinking because of holiday weekends.
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day.
Operators, operators, is that what you call a residence? An operator, uh, it's kind of.
Proprietors.
I don't know.
What people say. Well, you could, I was gonna say, if you wanna word it out, you could say individual operating or running the tag sale. You wanna word.
Sellers.
Sellers, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Sellers shall remove all evidence of sale, thank you. Clarity. And, and merchandise by dusk of the day following close of sale and between all sales. Covering merchandise with a tarp pollen does not fulfill this requirement. Items being left as free must be removed after two days if not taken. This ordinance does not apply to farm stands and outdoor sale of agricultural products. Sound okay?
Sounds alright to me, right?
That sounds good to me.
Okay, alright, let's, we'll clean that up and get it back to you.
Yeah, just, just send it to Tara, well, she'll send it out to everybody, we'll all have a copy.
And you're on the, the planning commission email list?
I don't know.
You did email me, so I, and I emailed you back, so I should be.
I was gonna say, she doesn't have, she just has the one email. Well, actually technically two, cause didn't you take over?
So I'm executive dot assistant, yeah, at Tom Pollen, so I will make sure I have your email.
Back to E for a minute, a tarp.
Executive tarp assistant?
Yep.
Hold on, I'm gonna, somebody's gonna leave it for three days? For what? For a time, a tag sale, a tag sale or a flea market for three days?
Yes.
Covering, covering with a tarp would be okay.
You could, so you get, my, the way I interpret this is, you wanna have a tag sale, you get to set your stuff up, you get three days to leave it there. At the end of the third day, you gotta pick your crap up. That means I, I mean, goes behind permanent screening.
But in, during that, during that three days, you can cover it with a tarp.
Yeah, you can cover it.
Keep the weather off it overnight.
Yeah, you can cover it with a tarp. This just says the tarp does not fulfill the requirement af, you know, of removing it after three days.
I'll, I'll make that clear though Fred, when I, I'll tinker with it a little.
I think this is much more concise, I like, I like it.
Well, that's again, we're gonna just send it, we're just putting something together, we're sending it to select board, select board's gonna go through it again and chop it up whether they want it or not. We don't know until they do it.
Should we, so then the idea of making something, boiling it down. So that you could hand it out, you wanna wait on that until?
Yeah, I wanna, I'm thinking we should wait till after the select board does this, and if they get it done and.
Why don't we make a suggestion?
Because then it'll be exactly hashed out, so we'll know exactly what we gotta put down, and then we can just make a cheat sheet for, for that stuff. Cause we still gotta do enforcement and stuff on that.
Yeah, and I would, just a suggestion, I would say, when you go to present it to the board. If they start having suggestions, I would say, why don't we schedule a joint work session? And we can all sit down and work together.
And do that.
So that way it helps eliminate the whole back and forth.
Right.
If they've got ideas, let's schedule a joint, joint meeting, and we can all sit down. Obviously, you, you do it as a workshop, that way you, nothing's getting voted on, you're just writing language.
Let them pick it apart, and we'll argue with it.
Right, that sounds good.
Yeah, if we're gonna have a government, let's like get some work done.
Hey, you're just wondering, how does.
Hey, I think we did, I think we did really good here, I think so.
I think that's a lot better.
Yeah, my thinking on the enforcement, I was just, that's for the select board, I ain't got, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna go there.
Yeah.
When I was a teacher, I had a grading.
It is, what I, what I was.
You can offer, the guys can offer suggestions.
Yeah, I mean, I, there were suggestions from.
Right, I'm gonna get.
I mean, most of them, I left them all blank. On the, the, the template that I use from DCF.
So it's, like you said, the select board will, will determine that, and it, that'll determine how serious they wanna take it.
Right.
If they wanna crack down on it and get the stuff to stop. They will have escalating and they will put some teeth behind it.
Right.
It's five dollars, cause garbage flows out the back of your truck, and you don't have a cover on it.
And they, they already done that, I think.
They've done that.
That stuff, yeah. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm thinking about doing is, if I can get Tara maybe to contact Bennington and get their enforcement part sent down here.
Okay.
And then we can review that on the next, our next meeting, and we'll just look through that part. And see if that's something we could just add to it to help select board move forward, but this is what this town is doing.
That's what happens.
It may help, it may not, if they may take something from it, or they don't, it's, but it'll be there, you know, I mean, we could.
I do know they have a whole procedure worked out.
Yeah.
But they'll send you a letter and they give you so many days to rectify it, or they finally.
Then you get a letter, then you get a, a ticket, a fine, right? And then you get, you know, and then finally it's a lien on your property or something, I guess.
It's to the taxpayer, but I think this is something that Fred, in your position, would walk up to somebody and have a conversation with him, really.
Yeah.
Maybe once. Every day thing with the same person, it's gonna be not, not gonna be walking up to them with a friendly conversation, it's gonna, gonna start getting.
Well, once something gets passed.
Yeah.
Once something gets passed, everybody gets, ideally, everybody gets a fair warning, documented warning. And then if it doesn't rectify, then.
If somebody has said that you would probably, you know, I don't know, it's probably gonna take, I don't know what the timeline would be like. But, you know, that you would give people, I don't know, months, you know, before you really start to enforce.
I think, I think maybe even using a, a, a ticket book, where you get a, you get a free, get out of jail free card.
Warning, yeah.
And after that, then things start increasing.
But like we said, that's gonna be, y'all, that.
That'll be.
You can handle the enforcement part of it later on, but for right now, we concentrate on the language.
Right, right.
Brian, maybe you know more about the ARPA money? Because Michelle wanted me to bring up that she, Michelle Peckerle, who's not here tonight, has been helping with this. She felt like we should use, we should. Use some of that ARPA money to, like, just go in and clean up some of these really.
So the first half of the ARPA funds are already accounted for and already spent. So we have some, some funds earmarked for the second half. However, those earmarks are contingent on the funds actually coming in, because the feds can always change their mind on it. So we haven't put anything set in stone that, if the funds don't come in, we then still have to cover it. So.
Getting back though to what, yeah, okay, so it's not a shared deal anyway with the ARPA.
Yeah, exactly.
All together, you're saying, and.
The second half, but the first half, yes.
Certainly the town has plenty of things that they.
There's quite a few things that are already on the wishlist.
Yeah, because I, I just. You know, I, I. I just can't agree with what was said at that meeting, where, you know, like, that it would offend the people who already have. Who already have junk permits, you know, spent forty dollars. I've spent forty dollars, I wouldn't be offended if some, some of this mess was cleaned up, I'd be thrilled to death. I would not be offended to see this town looking better, even if somebody got it for free.
So I.
I, I.
Know what I'm saying?
I agree, I agree.
So this, I, I completely agree with you. In talking with Joel, and we're gonna be meeting, is, are we, is it on the agenda for Thursday about what Tom gave us for the spreadsheet for the costs? Was that this Thursday?
It's this, the fourteenth, no.
Oh, the fourteenth, sorry. So I don't know if you saw the last select board meeting, but Tom Schuie came before us and let us know about the cost increase from Casella. So effectively the prices doubled to the cost of the town. The town was already operating as, at a deficit for the transfer station. So we're gonna be potentially operating at a bigger deficit. He's proposing, you know, I don't wanna spoil it, but he's.
Twenty-five percent.
Well, up to, he gave us a breakdown of what it would cost, like fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent on, to cover the cost increase. So we'll be dealing with that. After talking with Joel and the amount of time his guys are spending picking up trash on the sides of the road. Joel actually suggested if we go any farther, the town may wanna see about just buying a couple of garbage trucks and just literally paying somebody to drive around and pick up garbage. He didn't mean for residents, he literally meant just picking it up on the sides of the road. For the amount of trash. So I know I had discussed it before you guys had the meeting, under the previous board about, so the rough numbers I came up with were. Just based on, at that time, current pricing was all, a little over three quarters of a million dollars. And that was just at current rates that they charge an individual property owner for a ninety-six gallon container, picked up every two weeks. Multiplied out by the fifteen hundred or so properties in, in town. And that would be a cost of, in. Like I said, that's fifteen hundred, or three quarters of a million, was like seven hundred and eighty-four thousand. But that was before the price increases.
You knew this was gonna come with the gas tax with Casella.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, just.
Yeah, so.
They don't lose any time.
So the, so the. Everything's gonna co, come at a cost, whether it's through the enforcement, cause we're gonna end up having to fight some of these in court. We already, we've already anticipated that, we're gonna have to spend the money there. If we do it through just helping out people and just paying to remove their property, the.
Their garbage.
Their garbage, sorry. My personal fear is that it would turn into, well, I no longer have an incentive to actually pay to dispose of my garbage, if I let it sit there, the town will just come in and take it for free.
That's, that's my problem.
That's my fear.
Can we make it clear that this is a one-time, that's why it'd be good, you're a Zarpa money, so, well, we're not gonna have another damn pandemic.
Hold on, Jim's gonna stand up.
I just witnessed one of the trailer parks cleaning up. The guy bought the property. You can't believe the amount of money he spent for one time cleanup. And it's right back there again. It messed me up, about forty years across from this place.
So that goes back to like what else, saying to Fred, if, if the landowner made them sign lease agreements, he needs to start pursuing that.
Right.
Because if he lets him, if, if a property owner, landowner, landlord, gets away with it, it will continue.
We have to remind government that it is not business friendly.
No.
Alright, well, this is sad, this is.
Yeah.
The, the fact is, the fact is, we won't get any support.
So I don't, so just, my quick thought, if the town does pursue. Stepping in after the whole, say, we've issued a warning, we've issued fines, you still haven't done it. If the town steps in to clean it up, do we place a lien on the person's property? That, to me, that would be the next, the next logical step, if the town's gonna pay to clean it up, the town needs to pursue somehow getting.
Right.
Compensated for, cause otherwise, if there's no attempt to be compensated, you've left the door open for people to be like, screw it, I'll just let the town pay for it. But if it's like, well, if they step in and, I've got a twenty thousand.
I keep hearing about a lien, a lien, what, can somebody explain to me what is that, what happens?
Sure, a tax sale.
Your tax bill. You're putting against your property.
So it's, it was up for sale, and we're gonna have a sale shortly, aren't we?
If you don't pay.
Yeah, there was like over thirty properties.
Thirty properties, yeah.
I don't know what, I, I'm sure some of those people have paid their taxes since then, they usually always are, so.
But if, if, if we put a levy against you because we had to go clean it up and you say it was a thousand bucks to clean it up, that's gonna get, it'll get a tax, attached to your taxes. When you pay your taxes, that's gotta get paid along, but if you don't pay that, and you can go more than, I think it's two years, what Ellen does, then it goes to tax sale. They'll just file it with their attorney, attorney takes it and files a.
Sells the whole house up.
There's, there's been a whole process that goes along with that.
So then we got more homeless people.
Oh, no, 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 Stacy, you've got a place where you can drive by every day.
Excuse me?
I say you've got a place you drive by every day.
So, I mean, yes, it could potentially lead to some people losing their property. But if you are, if you are owning a property. And you're being dutiful about it. And you just purposely let your garbage pile up, that's the risk you're taking. Like, at that point, you're daring the town to do it. And if we're going to take, trying to clean up the town seriously, then this is, that could potentially be the road the town would have gone. I'm not speaking on behalf of the entire board, that's just my thoughts.
Well, like I said, we'll do that on the next one if we can. What I wanna do is move this, so we can keep moving along. We're gonna do enforcement stuff, I just wanna talk about it, get an idea of that, we're gonna do that on the next meeting.
Okay, yeah.
I wanna get, like I said, I'll have Tara.
I mean, I, ultimately enforcement will, will be up to this.
We're gonna do some kind of enforcement.
I would say iron out the language of what the ordinance should say, and then worry about enforcement after that. So I don't think we should be beaten around, off in the weeds.
Right.
At two more meetings.
I mean, actually, it's all pretty well, it's all written out, there's just a lot of blanks.
Yeah.
Where you fill in the blank, how much money do you think the fine should be? So I, I'll bring it in, but I don't think you're, it'll take as much time as this stuff.
Well, get, let's, let's do this, get that straightened out, we've already done, I think that's pretty good the way that is, I think we're all in agreeance on that. So get that, get it sent in, we can all just have a copy of that. I'll get Tara to get a copy of the.
The definitions.
The whole thing, yeah, so the whole copy, so we'll have, so that she'll have it too, so she, she'll have it, stuff for the record. I'll, and we'll get a copy of the stuff from Bennington, our next meeting, we'll sit down and talk about.
Do you wanna wait another month for the next meeting, or do you wanna try to pull a meeting early?
Uh, we'll do one here at the end of the month here, our third week here.
Okay.
We'll do one more, third, whatever, I'll have to look at our schedule.
Well, normally planning commission only meets once a month, so that's why I'm asking.
No, we meet twice a month.
Twice, yeah, yeah, we're doing two.
I've only been meeting once.
First and third is what we made it.
No, we got first and, uh, first week and the third week of the month, uh, every Tuesday.
The nineteenth of April was.
April nineteenth.
So nineteenth then.
Okay, I'll be out of town, so again, like I said, I only meet once.
When's you?
That's okay.
He's just seventeenth, I was thinking, okay.
So we're gonna have, we'll have another meeting on the nineteenth, and that's where we're gonna just discuss some of that. We'll do something on, on the enforcement part, see if we can add that, any language that might help. We'll get it prepared, uh, next meeting.
I, I would say don't spend too much time on the enforcement part.
Yeah, I agree with that, I don't want to.
Yeah, let the, let the select board hammer that out, and if, if, that's where, that's why I said, if, if they start tearing it apart, suggest a workshop.
Yeah.
That way we can all sit down and work together, and it can be.
There's, I mean, you know, you should know, I wanna make it clear, I have talked to Bill Botso, I've talked to Nelson Brownell, I've talked to, you know, a lot of different, several lawyers. And I've shown them this, lots of citizens, you know, and, and sisters, and. And so. and sisters, and, and so, and you guys, and we've hammered this, I mean, so this is not, this is not something that's just, you know, somebody made up somewhere, you know what I mean?
No, there's been a lot of thought behind this.
There's also a lot of research into different, um, different.
How different towns have handled it.
Yes, different towns and their ordinances and whatnot, so.
So like you said, you, you pulled the initial draft from Essex, I think you said.
Essex Junction, and that, this part.
Yeah.
But then the rest, and the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, and that we all looked at, everybody had looked at.
Arlington.
Charltons, Shaftesbury's, different ones, and so I think when, maybe when we go in and talk to them, we'll, we'll find out that again. That we, this is not something just.
And, and that's why I also suggest, if, if it starts getting picked apart, say, we would love your input, why don't we all get together? Let's schedule, let's schedule a workshop brainstorming, and let's sit down and try to come up with an idea that you guys can work on.
What about, no, I've had several people express interest in meeting and, uh, talking about what needs to get done. I have people, you know, like a, a businesswoman over in, um, Bennington who lives in Tarpaulin.
Yeah.
Who has a neighbor who's a problem, you know, and so, um, there, you know, a lot of people have talked to me, because I'm Mrs. Garbage now.
Well.
So, um, can we open up such a meeting to?
Well, every, every meeting has a public comment slash, comment section.
Okay, so tell.
Okay, so, the, I'm of two minds on that. You know, from my past experience, I am all for getting everybody's input, I have no issue with that.
You know, and.
However, I hate to see it turn into a three-hour melee. Blank fest, because people just wanna come in and gripe about their neighbor's property, and they feel like that's their chance to vent.
Oh, oh, I see, no, no.
That's what you're opening up.
Yeah, so I would say the public will get plenty of opportunity during public comment at public hearings to offer their criticism and their, hopefully constructive criticism on improvements. Because that's when, if they get constructive criticism, the select board can then take it back and make any changes. If people just come in just to bitch about their, sorry, complain about their neighbors, then, okay, great, glad you could come vent, but that, why, that's why we're doing this.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, no, I think the people, yeah, the people I was talking to are people who are serious about, you know, coming up with some real ideas, but then.
And if they've got genuine.
They've all seen this, what, the previous, the initial, the draft that we had, and the feedback I got was, yeah, let's do it.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna stick with it, we're gonna stick with this, we'll go along.
And everybody's sent in.
And we'll, we'll see how it come down, and it's gonna turn over to them and.
Yeah.
It's what it is, we're only.
I mean, I, I am, I'm only in favor of pushing, doing something like this, but I, I just speak for me, I'm one of five. If the other four members say they have no appetite for it and they refuse to even look at it, then.
That's what it is.
Then that's as far as, that's all.
That's all we're doing, we're giving our shot.
Well, in my case, letters need to be strongly worded, letters need to be.
Well, that's why I say, when, when you go in there.
Why don't we get this town cleaned up?
State your case, see what the pushback is, if there's any, and then suggest a workshop and go from there.
Yep. All right, I'm gonna move along.
Yeah.
Um, get that, get that stuff done and get it back to us, and then, or get it back to Tara and we'll move along. Then we're going on, this is, we're not gonna have too much time on this, all I wanna do is, I had it put onto the agenda for mission statement and planning commission goals. So what I want is everybody just to come up with some thoughts for the next meeting as to what we can put together for our statement going forward for the year. What are we, what are our goals here from this board? What's our mission on this board to, to have going forward? We'll put something, we'll put something together.
I suggest that we all read what a planning commission is supposed to be. There's a really, we're kinda out, out on a limb here with writing.
Yeah, we're cut, yeah, we are, you know, this is considered, I, I would almost say, beyond our purview.
Yeah.
It is, that's, again, I was trying to stick with just writing something for our board, but that's where we went to. We're gonna just flow with that, I think, see what it is.
I think, I think we're on the right course, let's get this done.
Right.
And then the next thing that comes along.
Right, yeah, but with this, all we, all we're gonna do is kinda write a.
As far as submitting a mission statement, I would say just go right to VLCTU or right to the Vermont State Government and literally copy and paste the definition of a planning commission.
Why, is, are we, are we tasked with writing a mission statement, or was this?
It was, it was.
The select board requested that all the town's boards and commissions just kinda submit a mission statement on what you think you should be doing type deal. It's nothing, it's.
It's nothing spectacular, it's just something just for them to, to see and say, hey, okay, this is what, this is what our board's doing.
In an attempt to get the select board to be better informed as to what each board and commission and aspect of the town is doing, we broke down duties and responsibilities and signed each one of us, different ones, like for me, I have, I'm reporting back on planning commission, parks and rec, health officer, I'm co-reporting back as far as the dog kennel and dog catcher position. So just being appraised of what's going on, any issues they're having, project updates. So that way, not everybody on the board has to be fully informed about every individual item, but at least one person on the board has a good grasp on what's going on with any particular item and can then help everybody else out.
Um, that reminds me, um, in the past, um, the zoning administrator used to come and do that for us, kind of explain, well, where have we run into, you know?
Back when, back when Sid and those people, they used to help.
Yeah, how are you doing on enforcing the bylaws, kinda?
Well, yeah, but it was, it never worked.
Right, and I, and I.
What do you mean?
Well, no, I don't think.
I don't think Nelson ever came to too many meetings.
Oh, I hear you.
I've been, I've been dealing with this same thing, and, uh, if it sounds good, it never worked. And, uh.
Right, and I.
We did good as a group.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm.
And then, and basically, our statement and our goals is basically what we're doing, we're, a quick statement would be something simple of saying, we're trying to help clean up a town and move forward, so the town get in the right direction or something like that. It's just, it doesn't have to be a spectacular thing.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, like Brian suggested over there, doing that, but.
If you really want to encourage business and, you know, in this town, then you've gotta make it look a little better.
Right, Tara. Right, we can do that too, if anybody got a computer, just send, just send a note on what your, what your thoughts are. That's all it really is.
I think you're right, though, you can go to VLCT, we don't need to be.
The planning commission is charged with setting the overall policy and goals for land development and use in town. The primary functions of the commissions are to prepare and amend the town plan and the land use regulations.
Every five years, you have to have a new.
That's the definition of a planning commission right there.
So we're not there yet, but we just passed.
We could just, we could take something like that and just.
Literally, I would copy and paste that, and then you can say, examples of what we're attempting to do are a proposed ordinance draft to submit to the select board for junk.
Not junk.
Or, I'm sorry.
Trash.
Sorry, sorry, so.
For trash, yeah.
Or.
Don't do that again.
For excess litter and reuse on properties, uh, to help guide, to help guide the select board to cleaning, you know.
Right.
To coming up with a solution, that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
But literally, there's your mission statement right there, I would, I would copy and paste that verbatim.
All right, just do it then.
So.
Send this to there. Where is that, a VLCT?
I can look it up.
I literally just Google searched Vermont Planning Commission Purpose.
Oh, okay.
And that was the first thing that popped up.
What, who is it, is it Vermont League of Cities and Towns, or is it the statute, or what?
No, this is actually from Baratelboro.
Oh.
It's their first, it's the first paragraph of their role, so they kinda did something similar to us, so.
Yeah, send it out to her and we'll.
And then it goes down to say other stuff.
We'll take a look at that.
But, you know, it's no different than, than repurposing language from another town, so.
Okay, well, that's, that's a start with that anyway, because we just wanna submit something to them to.
Are you saying it's time to adjourn this meeting?
See if anybody out there?
Uh, no, there's a meeting for me. It's only, um, CAT TV's.
Nothing, okay.
I screenshotted what it said and I just sent it to Tara.
Yeah, okay, um, so no public comment, I'll, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Second.
I move we adjourn.
A second, first and second, round table, Megan.
Hi.
Hi.
Can I vote to adjourn?